All right, rise and join me in the fight allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the moment to sign a prayer. Thank you.
Where's Doug?
Doug is out. He's calling in today.
Is he at a meeting?
No, I would say, uh, Flutter is Robert Packer. She's in an ICU unit, so I need to be here with her.
Okay.
All right. We will call this meeting to order. Are there visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Yes. Commissioner Gates, you created rules last year and basically begged the other two commissioners to pass them to make clarification on the election stuff that you had already ruled on in secret so that the public would understand and the director would have better clarity on what to do. I believe the courts have now ruled those rules are no longer legal. Why isn't it on the agenda to fix that so that they're no longer part of the rules in the county?
What's that got to do with the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Election board's on the...
Election board's on the agenda, but that item is not on the agenda.
It may or may not be on the agenda, so I believe it should have been on the agenda, so it's okay to speak about it.
Okay, you spoke about it.
Okay. And there's a couple of Sunshine Act violations, I believe, that have been happening. One of them possibly is, and you can clarify on it. With your executive session, you say terms and conditions of current and prospective employees. If that's not related to a bargaining agreement or related to very specific employees, like nameable employees, that needs to be talked about probably in public. Because if it's general rules for your employees, that's something that you would be making a decision on, that's an agendaable item. Another thing is you guys have talked multiple times about the budget. Made allusions to that you are doing work on the budget and that you have plans for like the EMS, where you're planning on potentially having an agreement with the other local governments to put money in for the EMS. I've talked to EMS and local governments, and they've said you guys have already talked to them about it. In fact, I heard from them about this plan before. You guys had spoke about it at the last meeting. That's something that has to be discussed in public. And if you're having discussions about doing that and you're telling other agencies that that's something you're very possibly going to be doing, that entire discussion needs to be, between yourselves, needs to be in a public meeting.
Well, thank you for the lecture, but I don't understand what Kelly's talking about. I haven't discussed anything on that one anyway, so can we move on, please?
All right, unfinished business. Consider approving the minutes of September 11th, 2025.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider proclaiming the week, or new business. Consider proclaiming the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025 as Juvenile Justice Week in Bradford County, and I believe we have Dennis Hulselander, who is going to read the proclamation for us.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner.
I could hear that voice all the way across the field, too, by the way, just saying.
If I need a microphone, let me know. Proclamation Bradford County Juvenile Justice Week for October 5th through the 11th, 2025. Whereas Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system is charged with providing programs of supervision, care, and rehabilitation which provide balanced attention to the protection of our communities, the imposition of accountability for offenses committed by juveniles, and the development of competencies to enable children who come within the jurisdiction of the juvenile justice systems to become responsible and productive members of their communities. And whereas the mission of Pennsylvania's juvenile justice system is based on the principles of restored justice, which give priority to repairing the harm done to crime victims and communities and define offender accountability in terms of assuming responsibility and taking action to repair harm. And whereas the mission is premised on the belief that crime victims, communities, and juvenile offenders must all be regarded as clients of the juvenile justice system who should receive tangible benefits from their interactions within the system. And whereas community protection refers to the fundamental right of all Pennsylvanians to both be and feel safe from crime. And whereas victim restoration emphasizes that crime can forever change its victims, and that the goal of the victim restoration programs and services should be to restore crime victims to the greatest extent possible to the pre-crime status. And whereas youth or redemption embodies the belief that the vast majority of juvenile offenders are capable of change and have strengths upon which treatment services can build. And whereas all services designed and implemented to achieve this mission in all hearings and decisions under Pennsylvania's Juvenile Act, indeed, all aspects of the juvenile system must be provided in a fair and unbiased manner. Now, therefore, we, the commissioners of Bradford County, do hereby proclaim October 5th, the 11th, 2025 as Juvenile Justice Week in Bradford County.
And I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do on our behalf. Because it's obviously, as we all know, it is a challenging environment, especially, most especially, when you're dealing with youths. It adds another dynamic to it, but we thank you for all the work that you do and all of your other coworkers and stuff on behalf of Bradford County. Because it's a challenging environment, and it's becoming more challenging each and every day, as we see in the media. But we thank you. Just, again, can't thank you enough for all that you do. It's tough work, but it's work that needs to be done, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025 as Juvenile Justice Week in Bradford County pursuant to the proclamation as read by Mr. Hulselander.
Yes, I echo the sentiments that Commissioner Miller said and second it.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Just to again, thank you for all of your work in this field. It's incredibly important to our communities. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider recognizing October as Right to Life Month in Bradford County, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas 2025 is the 21st year of right to life that right to life has been formally recognized in Bradford County on an annual basis. And whereas the preamble to the Declaration of Independence states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Whereas the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution states that no state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, or shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, or deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of law. And whereas the citizens of the United States, we recognize that without life, there is no liberty; without liberty, there is no freedom, in which the individual may pursue happiness. So we must always defend human life at all stages. And whereas, without a respect for and protection of life, there are no other rights for citizens. And whereas, we must stand firmly united as a county that shows respect and love for the dignity and worth of every person at every stage of life, the unborn, the aged, the disabled, the mentally ill, and all of our most vulnerable neighbors. We now, therefore, proclaim October as Right to Life Month in Bradford County. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion emphatically.
And I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstaining, Mr. Chairman, for the reason as stated in last year's meeting when this matter came up.
All right. All right, we have motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving a letter of support for Bradford for Sayer Borough's application to the CFA Local Share Account or LSA statewide program for funding to construct a new inclusive playground in Sayer. And that's just an application, DCED. It's actually the Commonwealth Finance Agency.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Michelle, where is that playground? Do we have an address on where in Sayer that's going to be located? What'd you say? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it on the property of the first Citizens?
That's right, thank you. I think it's the one, that's right, thank you. I think it's on Lockhart Street there. It's where it's located, just so everybody knows. So thank you for reminding me, yes, it is on Lockhart Street.
All right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
And just to confirm, this is not an expenditure of funds, it's just a letter of support?
Right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering LLC for professional services related to Bridge 15 replacement. And I'll clarify that, it used to, actually Larson Design used to do all this work on our behalf, and some of the people that worked for Larson Design have created their own entity. And Larson Design, we're contracting with this entity, but the costs incurred are all part of the original contract for the Bridge 15 replacement. So it's no additional cost in the county.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
And so just to further clarify, the idea is, is that as part of the bid project with Larson, these services that would be with Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering were included within the cost of that, and were going to be done by Larson. And Larson is essentially spinning off the portion that we had already contracted with them. They're spinning that off to this other company with employees from Larson who are now doing it. And therefore, as a matter of housekeeping, it's essentially making sure the contract is with this new entity as opposed to with Larson. Because if we kept the contract with Larson and something happened and we weren't contracted with this new entity, that would be, that would be potentially problematic. So this is like a housekeeping thing, just so everybody understands, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the 2026 Bradford County Holiday Schedule.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-24 authorizing the transfer of $5,000 of Act 13 funds to the Bradford County Redevelopment Authority to be used for the legal services and insurance required to support the reestablishment of the organization.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? I'll just elaborate. This is an entity that has been kind of dormant for quite a while. It's been revitalized, and it's part of the whole process of trying to deal with some of the blight in few communities within the county. So we had to reconstitute this redevelopment authority, and they're going to need some seed money to have their own insurance and to deal with some legal services that they'll need to deal with on an ongoing or in the future, actually, is what it amounts to.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, on top of that, my understanding is, you know, it would be to access any dormant bank accounts, any unclaimed property, anything. Having the solicitor onboard, you almost need this type of stuff in order to get the funds, or at least additional funds, to then get the ball rolling.
Right. All right. We have a motion to second. We do have a motion to second, correct?
Correct.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel number 14-105.01-078-004-001, property of Aaron Willow in Canton Borough Ward 1 at a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law Act 542 of 1947 to Lyle Landon for $1,000.
So moved.
And I second, Mr. Chairman, with just a clarification. It's Kylie Landon?
Kylie, yeah.
Thank you.
Had to read all those numbers.
I know.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of the public, these, the three parcels that are identified, this one and the next two, all of those, my understanding from Mr. Allen, our treasurer, is that these are mobile homes?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel number 36-020.423-151-000-000, property of Victor Sirfoss located in Sayer, Pennsylvania, at a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law Act 542 of 1947 to Diane V. Ward for $100.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Consider approving the sale of parcel number 36-020.23.
No, no.
Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong, yeah.
That's okay.
These numbers. Consider approving the sale of parcel number 50-086.00-019-003-003, property of Michael Walters in Tuane Borough at a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Sale Tax Sale Law Act 542 of 1947. And the name is actually incorrect. So we're going to change that. It's actually clerical error. For, to Casey Chilson for $500.
So moved.
Just as a clarification matter, Mr. Chairman.
It's 500.
It was incorrect.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. Are you asking for a motion to amend the agenda?
It was just a clerical error.
It's just a clerical error, okay.
So it's actually to Casey Chilson for $500.
On that, on the basis of the explanation, Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
We have a second?
Yeah, I made a motion, but I'll second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a memorandum of understanding between Bradford County and Teamsters Local 118, court-appointed probation officers amending Appendix A of the collective bargaining agreement to include language pertaining to the hiring of experienced officers.
So moved.
Second. And, Mr. Chairman, do you want to give a little explanation of what the functional change is?
Yes, I will. We have a motion to second. The functional change is just clarifying some language in the collective bargaining agreement relating to what constitutes experienced officers and the hiring thereof, because it deals with the pay scale or pay grades that they're hired at. So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services in Adelphi Village for professional services effective from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 inclusive.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider approving the purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the Impact Project Incorporated for Professional Services effective from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Concerned Professional Services for Children and Youth and Families for Professional Services effective from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Service Access and Management Incorporated for Professional Services effective October 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
So moved.
Second. And, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this is a... This would be the new amended, or I should say, the amended agreement for professional services with CMIC that takes an effect. As I know on this, you know, on this agenda and the prior agendas, CMIC employees moving over to becoming county employees. So this is in recognition of that, there's a new agreement for professional services.
Yes, okay. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract between Bradford Sullivan Drug and Alcohol Program and the Endless Mountains Behavioral Health Center for Professional Services effective September 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
And motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the contract between Bradford Sullivan Drug and Alcohol Program and Northern Tier Counseling for Professional Services effective September 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Andrew Hickey to be reappointed to the Northern Tier Solid Waste Authority Board effective January 1st, 2026, to serve a term of five years.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? And I will say, we want to thank Andrew for continuing to serve on that board. It's tremendously important to our county and our region, so we thank him for asking to be reappointed. So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the hires and transfers from Caitlin Michael down through and including Ray Lynn Palmer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Other business. An executive session was held on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. to receive information and conduct discussions about the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
And that would have been concerning the prison?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, an executive session was held on Monday, September 22nd, 2025, from 11:40 a.m. to 11:51 a.m. to discuss the terms and conditions of current and prospective employees. Moving on, salary board. We have Matt Allen, our treasurer, here. There is no unfinished business. New business. Consider the hires and transfers from Caitlin Michael down through and including Ray Lynn Palmer.
I'll make that motion for the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt. All right. Moving on. Election board. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda, the visitor or the election board? Hearing none. I don't know why we're down there. Jumped ahead. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise that the Bradford County Election Bureau will perform logic and accuracy testing for the upcoming November 4th, 2025 municipal election. The testing will take place in the election conference room of the Main Street Annex of the Courthouse, located at 215 Main Street. Testing will begin on October 21st, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. and continue throughout the week as necessary.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just an encouragement for everybody to come out. I see a number of people in this room. I see a number of people who have attended the logic and accuracy training. I hope everyone who has attended found it informative. And if anybody has any questions, this is a great time to come and watch. I think that's a great thing.
Is this going to be the same group that handles the test legislature?
Yes. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now visitors' remarks. Mary Sternman.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting us speak today. On behalf of the Golden Harvest Opportunities, we wanted to just make the public aware that our 11th Annual Halloween Hunger Drive kicked off last Saturday at the Wysocks Ball Festival on the grounds of the Wysocks haunted house. And will continue through November 1st on Friday and Saturday nights during the haunted house events. So during that, we will collect non-perishable food items, toilet paper, bar soap, and pet car items for distribution to local entries and shelters. That's a great event. It's a community-based event. We try to be as inclusive as possible. So we really just want everyone to come and have a good time as well. And then I also kind of wanted to mention this year, we're doing something new. We're partnering with the Keystone Theater to do Movies and Madness, and that is a joint venture for both of those nonprofits. Two tickets for, two admissions for one price for that night only. And that information can be found on the theater's website at www.vcrac.org. And anything for the haunted house, for Halloween, for Hunger, our upcoming Christmas event, all of that is on our website, which is www.b-o-o-i-c. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mary. All right, Hugh Austin.
Yeah, at the last commissioners' meeting on September 11th, a special prayer was invoked prior to the meeting for a victim of political violence. The victim, not a religious, but a public figure with a large following, was shot and died in a public forum, surrounded by people who witnessed the event. And so one commissioner, who was strongly affected, felt the need to offer a prayer to that one person. Only after prompting did he include the two children who had been shot on the same day. He included those children and later said the prayer was for our country. Once the meeting began, there was talk by the commissioners of the assassination, changing the world. Why, I ask, was that event more horrible than other acts of violence this country has experienced? Why is it more noteworthy than the assassination of Minnesota Speaker of the House Melissa Hortman, her husband, and their dog in their own home? Or the attack on Paul Pelosi? Or the attack on Paul Pelosi, whose assailant brandishing a hammer and admittedly searching for Nancy Pelosi fractured Mr. Pelosi's skull and nearly killed him? Or the shooter who fired multiple rounds from outside a church in Minneapolis where children were at mass, killing two and wounding over 20 others? Yet this one event seemed to be especially noteworthy and more deserving of our attention. He was a victim no more or less than all the others. Violence in this country, especially gun violence, is epidemic. Political violence seems to be escalating. It seems to have coincided with the increase of vicious and aggressive political rhetoric. Calls to tone down the rhetoric may only cause the talk, or worse, fall on deaf ears. There is plenty of blame to go around, but blaming won't solve anything. Demonizing those with whom we disagree only creates more problems. Saying one's own politically agreeable victim is more deserving than, quote, "the others", draws a line over which those who perpetrate such act can feel justified because they are on the right side. Since a precedent was set by this speech of prayer, perhaps we should do one at each meeting.
Walter Woods.
Yes, boys, gentlemen, Chairman, this is, I've felt afraid for our country because exactly, you know, the lecture we just got is exactly what the prayer was for, was because we're so divided. So I stand by it and it's, uh, it's it.
All right, Mr. Woods.
Last few meetings, well, for quite a while, you guys have been saying that you don't discuss personnel items, but that's not exactly what you tell former employees. You have sent letters out to former employees saying that you will discuss their personnel file if they don't stop speaking whatever they want to say. Or maybe your attorneys did that without your authorization. And if they did it without your authorization, telling employees, former employees, that if they don't stop their type of speech, you will release information about them that you say you don't release, and I think that's wrong. And you need to have a consistent standard. You're not going to talk about employees, fine, but don't be telling your employees if they don't keep their mouths shut, you're going to talk about them. It's inappropriate. Again, Commissioner Gates, I hope you write up a new law for the county for the election stuff. The stuff that you had written up before is now considered illegal, as far as I know. And if you're about transparency and being clear to the election department and to people who vote, you should fix that. Bring it forward and have a vote on it. I don't have enough time to mention anything else.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what, I don't know what he's talking about, what these little boy directing stuff, come up with names and facts, or just, because that's a crock.
Commissioner McLenko, would you like me to name the, I had 20 seconds, and he's still talking about my stuff, so Commissioner McLenko, would you like me to name the employees publicly?
Chairman, please, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll.
All right, James.
I'll do that in the next meeting.
Stop. James.
Is there, do the other two commissioners, is there any, is there a basis for what he's saying that we've threatened to, to release information about these employees if they say things that, that you don't want them to say?
To my knowledge, no. It's hard to know what he's talking about in terms of the letter, so that is what it is. Personnel matters are personnel matters, and they're not discussed in open public forums.
Also, that amendment to the collective bargaining agreement, was that collective bargaining agreement passed earlier this year, like a few months ago?
Five months ago.
I believe it was, so we're in September now, so I want to say it was approximately April. Is, again, sounds about, about the time period.
Yeah, because I tried to get information about what the terms of that collective bargaining agreement was from the human resources director. After, after you passed that back in April, and she wouldn't release anything, she said it wasn't finalized. And I, the bargaining agreement wasn't finalized or could be changed. And so I'm wondering, is this bargaining agreement finalized? Can I get information, can I get the terms of the agreement now?
I believe that this agenda, yes.
Yeah, I would see it appropriate for you to receive a copy of it.
Okay. And does the amendment increase the pay grade for?
It just clarifies what's considered of experience in hiring experienced probation officers, people with experience.
What?
Correct.
Sorry about this. Yeah, those are, those are the questions I had.
Which bridge is Bridge Number 15?
Excuse me, we're still with, Doug, we're still with press, so, hang on.
I always wanted to say, I want to clarify one thing, that Commissioner Gates, commissioners can't make law, that's ridiculous. But let me ensure that I can get that clarified for the press.
Go ahead.
Which bridge is Number 15?
It's the one up in Coal Creek Road, I believe, in Stevens Township. It might be right on the border. Is that the one we're talking about, the one on Coal Creek Road? I think it is. I think it's either Stevens or Harrow Township.
Okay, yep. The.
Probably Harrow Township, now that I say that.
The Bradford County Redevelopment Development Authority.
Yes.
How long were they dormant for?
Without looking, I couldn't tell you, it's been some time.
And I guess the question would be sort of where, you know, what you constitute as dormant. I think if you look, you can go over to the recorder's office and pull, look at deeds on which they were engaged in transferring property. I want to say some of the last stuff materially that they were doing, again, just from memory, was somewhere, I want to say, the 90s, maybe the early 2000s. So it's been some period of time.
More than 20 years.
That would probably be a fair statement.
And what are, what are their responsibilities?
So again, the idea, it's set forth in Pennsylvania statutes, but they have the authority, among other things, to come to acquire properties, whether it's donated by a municipality, for example. Let's say a municipality came to own the property through a taxidermist, and it's deteriorated. The municipality could essentially convey that property over to the redevelopment authority, who, assuming it had funds, could redevelop it, and then be able to then transfer that property so that it goes to an owner to hopefully get back onto the tax rolls and be producing property in that sense. So the goal of the redevelopment authority is, broadly speaking, light mitigation. But among other things, that would be a way that they could acquire the properties, fix them up, get them back into the hands of people who can use them. And obviously, that has a variety of benefits, not just for tax purposes, but also to then hopefully provide additional affordable housing within the county.
And lastly, has the county received any updates from the state about the budget?
No.
No. Nope.
That's, again, I think we will probably reiterate our concern and consternation as stated in prior meetings.
They, have any of yours, I think he asked this, I think, at the last meeting, or one of the last meetings, have any of the, the lack of funding coming from the state, has that affected any of your services yet?
It's not affecting any of the services yet, no. We're continuing, services are being, operating as normal right now, but there's going to come a time in the not-too-distant future where we need to start looking at, you know, we've got some options that we're looking into as far as, we're going to continue providing services, but we may end up having to go out and access some money, borrow some money to continue to facilitate that effort. We're hoping we don't have to, but right now, we don't know.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner's comments?
I, I had some, and it does relate to the elections matter. So just to kind of recap, back in October of last year, there was a special meeting that was held to, well, even before that. I had called for a special meeting of the elections board because it was concerning to me that there might be this potential limbo in terms of voters in the county who were submitting mail-in ballots, and what would happen if they were not going to have an opportunity to Q R. And so I called a request of a special meeting, the special meeting was held. I personally was not in favor of moving away from being a Q R county, meaning a county that if you were determined to have had a improperly dated or improperly, whatever the issue was with the outer envelope, that your mail-in ballot would be rejected. I was personally not in favor of that. But I do think that, you know, in the interest of clarity, that the voters needed to have some certainty on that. And so obviously, we went through the elections meeting, and it was determined to move to being a county where if you had a rejected ballot envelope, you would not have the opportunity to go to the elections office and fix it, you had an opportunity to essentially cast a provisional ballot. Recently, there was a Third Circuit Court of Appeals case, or decision, that came down that indicated that an undated ballot envelope or a misdated ballot envelope should be counted. My understanding is, is that is still weaving its way through the.
Supreme Court and U.S.
I think it's right, that one in particular, I think, is now, I think there may be an attempt to appeal that to the United States Supreme Court. And so as to that, we will see what transpires with that. But I personally was going to, at this meeting, ask, and I think hopefully they'd be willing us to do this, reexamine at a future meeting before the election, have a meeting of the election board to reevaluate our process to ensure that there's some clarity. The one, I guess, donut hole that concerns me is, what would happen if, based on this law, somebody submits a mail-in ballot? And then it is deemed accepted, even though it's undated or misdated? If the law should then change, based on, let's say, the Supreme Court intervenes and says, no, Third Circuit, you've got it wrong, those should not be counted? The concern to me would be is, how do we, and there may be a difference of opinion about this, I don't know, but how do we allow the voters to know that something, if they got an email through the shore system, the electronic email system, if they provided an email saying, "accepted", how would we notify those voters so that they could then know, oh, I have to go and cast a provisional ballot on election day? And that's the donut hole to me that is the most concerning. And so I would hope that we would have an opportunity at an elections board meeting in the future before the election to at least clarify this. I would also ask, although I think perhaps this is just a voice calling out in the wind, is that there be some additional guidance coming down from the Secretary of State's office who administers elections in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, so that we would have clarity on the shore system, on what the coding is? And then that would hopefully inform how we would code things so that we always have an opportunity for a voter to know where, where their bucket, which bucket, is it in the accepted bucket, is it in the rejected bucket, is it in some other bucket? I think voters need to know that. Obviously, that, that's where my concern is, and I would hope that there would be an elections board meeting, hopefully we'll have one.
Doug?
Doug, can you hear us?
He's, he's with his mother in intensive care right now.
Had your music, people are walking by, but.
Understood.
You want to one vote, one vote, paper ballot, get rid of the machines, get rid of the mail-in ballots, and go to a very, a uniform way across Pennsylvania that doesn't have all, that won't have all these court cases and stuff, or paper ballots, you deal away with it, it was a bad idea, unconstitutional, and needs to be looked at again.
And Mr. Chairman, again, I think I've previously noted, I respectfully understood there's two positions on this, respectfully disagree with Mr. McLenko. I believe the constitutionality of these have been upheld, so while I understand, you know, maybe subject to future litigation, I think there is a difference of opinion there.
All right, during that, ask for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Take care of your mom, Doug.
Be well.
Back to I C, thank you.
Thank you.